Good morning. I'd like to call to order the House Public Hearing for the Committee on Housing. It is 9:02 a.m. and we are in Conference Room 430. Before we dive into the agenda, just some sort of housekeeping notes. One, we will have a two-minute time limit today in order to make sure that we can have as many people as possible testify and in order to ensure that we are done in a reasonable timeframe. So again, two minutes, which will, to the best of our abilities, be strictly implemented. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. In that event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify. And after your testimony is complete, the Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only. Please use the chat only for technical issues. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, and please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. That said, we will dive into the agenda. First up is HB 295 relating to Hawaiian homelands, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support.
Aloha Chair Ebsen, Vice Chair Miyake, and members of the House Committee on Housing. My name is Lindsay Kuna Pakele, and I'm Strategy Consultant for Housing for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We stand on our written testimony in support of HB 295, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next, we've got Department of Hawaiian Homelands with comments.
Aloha Chair Ebsen, Vice Chair Miyake, and members of the Committee, Ovalu Oriana Liao, Nahas the Government Relations Program Specialist for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. The HHL stands on its written testimony with comments regarding this measure. We appreciate the intent of this measure. However, there are many points of concern and nuances that would have to be addressed for this intent to meet fruition. In order to apply to be on the waiting list, you must be at least 50% Native Hawaiian. In order to succeed to an applicant's position on the waiting list, you must also be at least 50% Native Hawaiian. Because we all know that nothing in life is promised except for death and taxes, we always encourage beneficiaries to designate a successor, even though we legally cannot require them to do so. What this measure seeks to do is lower the blood quantum to 25%, which of course, as noted, would require an amendment to the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. However, that would also require review by the Hawaiian Homes Commission, beneficiary consultation, the Chapter 91 process, as well as review by the Department of Interior and the Secretary of the Department of Interior, and eventually, a majority vote in favor on Capitol Hill in Congress. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hawaii Self Advocacy Advisory Council in support. Mai Hall, individual in support on Zoom.
Aloha mai ka kau, o mai ha ko uinoa, no a'aliapakai mai ao. Aloha guys, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Mai Hall. I am an individual testifying today as a Kanaka Ma'vi, as a native Hawaiian. And it's really hard to testify in front of you because it's been, I was born in 1984. And in that year, when I was born, we were living with my mother and my two older sisters. We bounced around from house to house, just trying to make ends meet. My mother is a housewife, my father is a car mechanic, living with other people. And then my mother discovered the HHL, Hawaiian Homelands. She then got on the waiting list in 1985, a year after my birth. She is still on that waiting list, 40 years later. She turns 70 years old this year, and she is still waiting for her house. And right now, she still lives in a little small apartment in Salt Lake in A'aliapakai. I live five minutes away from her to help her as needed. And you know, my mother deserves the dignity of having a home to call her own, of having a home to plant, planted, to plant tea leaves and oleana and mamaki trees to lower her blood pressure. She deserves to grow up as an o'upuna, tending to her garden and her yard. And oleana no eao says, "Kehali'i ka aina, heka'ua ke kanaka." The land is chief and man is her servant. We need to be in stable, affordable housing. Our Kanaka, our people, need to be in land with yards and a fenced-in garden so we can tend to the land and the onee ku onee ha now in the stands of our birth. It is what is pono, it is what is right and just to do. And I plead you to do whatever it is in your power. I know DHL guys, and they can handle the law on changing things, whatnot. But if she dies on the list, we get nothing. It needs to change. I am 25% Hawaiian, and something needs to happen so that I have something to leave behind to my Kiki and her m'upuna. Mahalo.
Thank you. Chair, we've got seven individuals also with written testimony in support. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair. Members, any questions?
First, DHL. Hi, good morning. Thanks for coming. You know, it's kind of setting that you said the only thing guaranteed in life is death and taxes. Because for a lot of these people on that waiting list, that's exactly what's happening. They're paying taxes until they die, and then they don't have a place to call their own. Hawaiians, we use the word "imoa," charge forward, push forward. That's why we need to have that spirit of imoa when faced with all the obstacles that you named. I would like to have seen a little bit more fighting spirit out of the DHL office in regards to this bill. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Appreciate the comment, but in the future, if you could hold comments at the end. And for now, just questions for the testifiers. I do have a question, though. Just want to clarify, I think noted are, that you're highlighting the procedural difficulties in making a change to the law here. But does the, do you folks support reducing the blood quantum to 25%?
Yes, the department is currently engaging with the Department of Interior's Office of Native Hawaiian Relations to plan an appropriate approach for beneficiary consultation in order to gain the necessary data and reports that can be provided for the legislature to go forward with this initiative. And I apologize if my phrasing was misunderstood. I was trying to emphasize that we always encourage beneficiaries to designate a successor.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Members, any further questions? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is HB 199 relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. We stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Susan Lee, individual in support on Zoom. Not here. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Brett Murouka. For...
For...
Hakim.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm well.
Can you give me, you know, when I read this, I didn't get a clear picture of what, what areas of the public housing would you guys want to close off to the public?
Anything that we own, because sometimes we have a big lot, some of which has housing in it, but next to it that we own, it doesn't, and that causes a lot of people to come and do a lot of illegal activities. We want to make sure that also it's closed so we are able to trespass and do the necessary things to protect that community.
Okay, so like vacant, unused areas, you just close it off so we don't invite bad stuff from it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we own it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, any further questions? All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is HB 1096 relating to tenant selection, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
Hawaii Public Housing in support.
Thank you very much. We stand on our testimony.
Thank you. Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HB 1097 relating to public housing evictions, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support.
Strong support. Thank you very much.
Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none. HB 1095 relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support. Thank you. Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none. Next item is HB 1093 relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support. You're getting your exercise, Hakim. Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? We are very efficient today. Next item is HB 1094 relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support. Thank you. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on the matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Brett Murouka.
Yeah, Hakim. It's just you and me this morning. Hakim, you know, in regards to the seized stuff, whether it be sold, donated, or other, would that, would you, would public housing have to bring in a third party to conduct the sales and/or donation of the seized property?
Yes, we have no capacity or capability to do it our own.
Okay, and is that something you guys would be asking for appropriations for, to facilitate the third-party costs?
Not at this time. I think what we end up with 99% of the time is junk. So we just wait, and it never has a value.
Yeah, thank you. That was my follow-up question to that. If you guys did sell something that was seized, would that put the state liable for something that the state would sell that was seized?
No, I think the law is very clear that we have the right to if it's above certain value. But we do make all the efforts available to make sure that we contact the owner so that money goes to the owner, not to us.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I meant when I went and said liable, I would, I'm talking about the end user, someone who buys the product from you guys after it was seized. Maybe a faulty product, or let's say a bicycle that a child falls on, and they blame the state for it.
I'll get, can I get back to you on that check with the Attorney General's Office? I don't think so, but I want to make sure I give you the right answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, any further questions? Thanks, Hakim. Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HB 1056 relating to the Strengthen Hawaii Homes Program, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
DCCA in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Jerry Bump, Acting Insurance Commissioner. We'll stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support.
Aloha, Dante Hirat Epstein from the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support and are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney General with comments on Zoom? Oh, in person, sorry.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. We've provided written comments regarding clarification on Page 4, proposed Section 41DD, and whether interest shall remain in the fund. Thank you.
Thank you. The Climate Advisory Team in support. Hawaii Realtors in support. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? I have a question for the Insurance Commissioner. Thanks for being here. There are two bills on our agenda today which are really similar in nature. One of the big differences is that this bill puts the program under DCCA, and the other one would put it under DBET. I appreciate that you're here testifying in support, and I assume that means that DCCA is willing to run the program?
We are willing to run the program, or at least that was what my predecessor wanted. But we are willing to, I think part of the bill too also allows the outsourcing to run the program. Naturally, our general core mission in the Insurance Division isn't necessarily provide, we don't have in-house experts as far as maybe developing this type of program or certifying the construction, but we do think it is a very important program to launch. There are many other states along, you know, mostly along the Gulf Coast. Alabama is the, I guess, the premier location that has done this. They already have fortified 6,000 homes. So we think it's really good for the insurance market that if you start to strengthen homes, it also makes it more attractive for insurers to continue to write in Hawaii. So that's why we support the program. We're not opposed if another agency wants to take on that task, but again, we're willing to do that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Members, further questions? Rep. Ganda Nedi.
My question's for Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. I was wondering if this measure incorporates any, like, accounting for equitable distribution of grant funds or like, kind of need-based assessments of who, how to prioritize those funds? I know like your, the Green Infrastructure Authority's work is really focused on underserved communities, so if this is reflected in that measure at all?
Yeah, so in my reading of the bill, it wasn't explicitly in there. I think in general, it's usually older houses that would need things like hurricane retrofits. So those would tend to be maybe a lot of the same, like, underserved communities, but not explicitly in the bill.
Got it. But like sort of self-selecting, maybe?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Members, further questions? All right. Seeing none. HB 1013 relating to Important Agricultural Lands, Vice Chair for the Testimony.
HHFDC in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee.
Thank you. Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Brandon Stew. I'm in the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, and we stand in strong support. We stand by our testimony.
Thank you. Department of Ag in support. DBET in support. Land Use with comments. Agribusiness Development Corporation in support.
Francis and Penner Jr., here on behalf of Wendy Gady. ADC supports House Bill 1013 and are available for questions.
Thank you. Department of Planning and Permitting with comments. Purple Maya Foundation in support. Anyone on... Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? There's nobody from DPP here, correct? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HB 1294 relating to Agricultural Workforce Housing. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Attorney General with Comments on Zoom? Oh, in person.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kelsey Nagata, Deputy Attorney General, providing comments on HB 1294. Generally, commissions may be established by law rather than the department itself, so we have provided suggested revisions in our written testimony. I'm available for any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. HHFDC in Support.
HHFDC stands in testimony support.
Office of Planning and Sustainable Development with Comments.
Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Thank you. Agribusiness Development Corporation in Support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. ADC stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. State of Hawaii Land Use Commission with Comments. Department of Ag with Comments. Purple Maya Foundation in Support. Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HB 89 relating to teacher housing. Vice Chair for the testimony.
HB 89, Attorney General with Comments.
Good morning, Chair Evesland, Vice Chair Miyaki, members, and Horiuchi from the Department of the Attorney General. As we noted in our testimony, as written, the bill may have a constitutional issue. We have provided some suggested amendments in our bill providing standards by which the applications for the vouchers might be used, so I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Education with Comments. Office of Hawaiian Affairs in Support. Councilmember Addison Bulusan in Support. Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus in Support. HGA with Comments. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Members, any questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HB 276 relating to condominiums. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in Support. Richard Cohen, individual in support. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HB 528 relating to residential leaseholds. Vice Chair for the testimony.
HHFDC in Support.
HHFDC stands on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is relating to, HB 415 relating to public safety.
Hawaii State Fire Council in Support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Housing Committee. My name's Gary Lum. I'm testifying on behalf of the State Fire Council in strong support of HB 415, and just wanted to reinforce that modern building codes and fire codes undergo a robust scientific development process and peer review, and right now, when we take out a major component of the code, essentially, we're sitting on a two-legged stool. For instance, if you're driving a modern car, you got seat belts, airbag, anti-lock brakes, and you, we're taking out one of those major systems for safety. So in essence, we're compromising the safety of citizens in residential housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Fire Department Chief Entour in Support. Chief Todd, Hawaii Fire Department in Support. BIA Hawaii in Opposition on Zoom.
Hello, I'm trying to get my camera on. Sorry about that. Sometimes it goes a little slow here. Hi, I'm Roseanne Freitas, I'm with the BIA Hawaii, and we are in strong opposition to HB 415. Right now, builders provide various options for new homes and renovations and remodeling, so fire sprinklers are one of those options that they can look at, but of course, depending on its location, it could cost a considerable amount of money. Most of the fire damage and loss occur in homes built prior to upgrades and revisions to our current building codes that require the installation of firewalls, smoke detectors, and other construction techniques and materials that are intended to minimize losses to the fires. Right now, we're not anti-sprinkler, but we are pro-affordable housing and consumer choice, and as of December 2024, the new median home price is $975,000. So adding this cost onto it is only going to continue to rise the housing costs here in Hawaii. Again, BIA in strong opposition of HB 415. Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne. Pacific Home and Appliance Distribution in Opposition. Naya Hawaii in Opposition. Ka'ili, individual in Support.
I'm your Chair, Vice Chair, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, to me members. I'm so strong support this measure because the fire safety is the most important in the public building setting, because a fire sprinkler system help mitigates, porters to mitigate any large fires in the building. So when the fire started, the sprinkler helped to extinguish the fires before getting out of control. Please pass this measure, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Gentry Homes in Opposition. DR Horton Hawaii in Opposition. Anyone online or in person wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? All right. Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HB 1467 relating to housing resiliency. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in Support.
We stand on our written testimony and are available for questions.
Thank you. Office of Information Practices with Comments. Attorney General with Comments.
Morning, Chair, members of the committee. Deputy Attorney Andrew Kim. We provided written comments regarding unlawful delegation of legislative power, clarification on whether the special fund is within the state treasury, and providing authority for the department to extend the timeframe to complete the retrofit. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Office of Planning and Sustainable Development with Comments. Thank you. Climate Advisory Team in Support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Jeff Mickalina with the Climate Advisory Team, testifying in support of this measure, and I apologize for missing 1056 earlier, these are substantially similar. We think it's really key to implement a program. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here. Alabama has a highly successful program, offering grants for homeowners to put in these really simple hurricane clips, things to hold a foundation to the, to the home. So when we do get hit by that hurricane, or a strong wind event, rooftop stay on, which is a key part of keeping folks in their home, and then also not overwhelming our other, you know, shelters and places where people go after a storm event. So strongly support this measure. There are a few differences between 1056 and this measure. We hope that you consider adopting and harmonizing those two, those two measures. One of them is, you know, thinking about a third-party administrator for the program, just to streamline things. This works really well with the Public Utilities Commission and Hawaii Energy, you know, going out to contract with a third-party who does this really well, this sort of work. And there are a few other changes between those two bills to consider to make sure we have a good, strong Hawaii Homes program in place going forward. So we appreciate you hearing this measure. Thanks for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us?
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Kika Bukowski, IBW 1260. I apologize, I didn't, I did not plan to testify on this measure as well as 1056. I didn't submit written testimony, but I had a chance to talk with the Insurance Commissioner, and I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is, I just want to, maybe it takes time to understand this issue a little bit better, but what I'm hearing is that we have building codes and standards, and there are some bills that are calling to allow for the reduction of the minimum standards, and now we have bills that are trying to create an entity to create minimum standards to help with the insurance issues. So in my brief discussion with the Insurance Commissioner outside in the hallway, there may, there may be running some, some conflict and run contrary the measures that are trying to allow counties to reduce minimum standards, and now this, I understand, is trying to create minimum standards. So just maybe keep that in mind as these bills move forward.
Okay. Sorry, just for clarification, are you just comments or in opposition?
You know, I guess if we follow the minimum standards of the state building codes, we shouldn't have to implement new entities to create minimum standards that the insurance companies will insure. The building, as, as the Fire Council mentioned, the Building Code Council goes through a very robust review process of creating minimum standards for our building codes for the purpose of protecting public safety and health. So if we follow the minimum state standards, there shouldn't be a need for a third, another body to create another set of standards that we need to follow. That's the intent of the, of the, of the state building codes. And I, and I think, and a lot of it has to do with insurability, so I guess comments just to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Kika. I appreciate it. Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Danielle Bass. Apologies for coming in late, I was monitoring outside. State Sustainability Corner from the Office of Applied and Sustainable Development. We offer comments on this measure. Essentially, we have two suggested amendments. One, in terms of the definition of disaster, we found that to be very limiting. We do recommend expanding that definition to really encompass all windstorms, inclusive of Kona lows, which are very repetitively occurring, especially with a changing climate here in Hawaii. With the increased occurrence of Kona lows, of course, we see more tornadoes actually affiliated with Kona lows here in Hawaii, even though they still remain rare, but we thought that that would be actually responsible to include that. We offer other definitions which are consistent with FEMA's definition of disaster and catastrophic events. Secondly, in terms of the definition of historically vulnerable area, that is a vague and broad phrase, if you will, and so we offer the legislature a few questions. It, as written, that generally applies to the entire state. The entire state could be interpreted as a historically vulnerable area. If the legislature wills that, then you may keep, of course, the definition or even delete it because it would apply to the whole state. If the legislature intends this to be written for particularly vulnerable communities that we're not aware of, we offer some definitions to tighten that language, and we also provide, we suggest that the legislature also kind of tightens that language with a specific timeframe. So we offer proposed language if you want to use it, otherwise, no need. I'm available for comments if you have any questions or...
Thank you, Danielle. Anyone else, anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on the matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Danielle, I have a question for you. Regarding the historically vulnerable areas, do you have a recommendation on whether to delete that or to try and refine it in some capacity?
Thank you for the question. We do yield to the legislature, you know, we understand that a program like this could benefit all Hawaii residents, especially residents who may need the extra assistance for, you know, retrofitting their, their roofs. So, you know, it could go either way, and we give it to the legislature to make that decision.
Okay, thank you. Members, further questions? Rep. Representative Gandanetti.
Maybe same question, but for the Climate Action Team.
It's a great question. Should we limit this to certain folks, or places that have been historically vulnerable to storms and disasters? I mean, two, two ways of thinking about this. I mean, one is, we really don't know where that next hurricane's going to hit. The, the good news is, the state has done some great work with a consultant, and we'd be happy to provide this to the committee or the follow-on committees, looking at kind of the intersection between places that are more disaster-prone, as well as kind of socioeconomic AMI for those areas. And so, you know, one sort of compromise might be, give that discretion to the department and say, we should prioritize these areas, but they can do it, make the grants anywhere. I know in Alabama, it seems that, I don't think they have any restriction there, but the, the lion's share goes to the coast, just because those are the ones most vulnerable.
Yeah, Rep. Murauoka.
For the gentleman?
Or Jeff, again?
For Jeff, yes.
Hi, Jeff. Jeff, I asked this question out of ignorance on my behalf of the, of the entire being, but I hear a lot of testimony this morning about roofs and clips. Does it, would this bill also help with shoreline erosion?
The measure you're looking at currently, Rep, isn't focused on shoreline erosion, it's mostly on that structure and wind resistant devices.
Structure. Okay, thank you.
Members, further questions? Seeing none. The last item on our agenda is HB 741 relating to housing. Vice Chair for the testimony.
HHFDC in Support.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members. HHFDC stands on its testimony in support. We know that the Affordable Home Ownership Revolving Fund was created to, to provide financing for, you know, those groups that provide housing for, or for sale housing for houses at 100% below AMI, and these are typically nonprofits or self-help builders, and this bill only exempts those projects up to $3 million. So these are small projects, less than a half dozen units. So all of our other programs are subject to prevailing wage, but in this case, we feel that the exemption can be justified.
Thank you. Hawaii Habitat for Humanity in Support. Hawaii Community Lending in Support. Maui Chamber of Commerce in Support. Anyone else online or in person wishing to testify on this matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none. We will recess briefly. All right, rolling straight into it. Um, reconvening, uh, our House Committee on Housing, um, public hearing for decision-making on Wednesday, February 5th, it's now 9:49. Uh, the first item on the agenda is HB 295 relating to Hawaiian homelands. I recommend moving out in HD1 with technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and a defected date, and to, um, in conversations with the introducer, to clarify the intent of the bill by defining qualified application successor as a descendant who is at least 25% Hawaiian and meets the criteria in the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, Section 209. Members, any discussion? All right, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 295, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Rep. Cochran excused. Rep. Grandinetti.
Aye.
Rep. Keela.
Aye.
Rep. Kiragawa.
Aye.
Rep. LaChica is excused. Rep. Moroka.
Aye.
Rep. Perick is excused. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next item is HB 199 relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. I recommend we move out in HD1 with a defected date. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting, uh, noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran, LaChica, and Perick for the remaining, remainder of this meeting, um, we're gonna vote on House Bill 199. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any noes? Any with reservations? The recommendation is adopted.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Next item is HB 1096 relating to tenant selection. I recommend we move out in HD1 with a defected date and with technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. Vice Chair for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1096, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any noes? Any with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Uh, next is HB 1097 relating to public housing evictions. I recommend we move on HD1 with a defected date. Members, any discussion? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1097, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Any reservations? The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next item is HB 1095 relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. I recommend that we defer this bill as it's essentially identical to HB 199. Uh, next item is HB 1093, um, relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. I recommend that we move out in HD1 with a defected date and with technical amendments need for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, any discussion? Uh, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1093, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Any reservations? Seeing none, Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next item is HB 1094 relating to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. I recommend that we move on HD1 with a defected date and with technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, any discussion? All right, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1094, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Any reservations? The recommendation is adopted.
Uh, next is HB 1056 relating to the strength in Hawaii homes program. Um, I think this is an exciting program and a great bill, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. We do have two bills which are really similar to each other here, um, so I'm gonna be deferring this one, and we will move the other bill, um, and make a number of amendments to bring it more in line with, uh, with this version. So we'll be deferring HB 1056. Uh, next item is HB 1013 relating to important agricultural lands. I recommend that we move on HD1 with a defected date, with technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, um, and to define short-term rentals as defined by each county in the bill. Members, any discussion? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1013, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes? Any with recommending, uh, any with reservations? The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next is HB 1294 relating to agricultural workforce housing. I recommend that we move this out with an HD1 with, uh, technical amendments, um, with a defected date, and will adopt the amendment provided in testimony from the Attorney General's office, and clarify that the Department of Agriculture is required to provide administrative support, uh, and also amend the bill to remove the reference to the members not being subject to the Ethics Code, as the Ethics Commission has already opined that the code does not apply in these circumstances. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1294, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Next is HB 89 relating to teacher housing. I recommend that we move out in HD1 with tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, uh, with a defected date, and, um, to adopt the standards provided in the Attorney General's testimony. Um, and I just want to clarify one thing. Um, in the DOE testimony, it was requested that we clarify whether the bill applies to public, private, or charter schools, and to clarify whether a teacher would have had to worked, have worked immediately prior, or could have worked one year at an earlier, um, date. Um, the bill, page 3, line 18 of the bill says, um, that eligible teacher means a person who is a full-time teacher has taught at a school in the state for at least one year prior to the application date, and is employed by the Department of Education or a public charter school. So I think their question as to whether this applies to, what schools it applies to is clear, and that it says it in here. Um, the question of whether the one year of work has to be immediately prior, or could have been at an earlier date, um, my sort of plain read of the bill is that, um, that that one year could have been at any time, um, though they need to be full-time at the time they're getting the voucher. Um, if the department has a position on that, um, then I urge them to, um, you know, offer up testimony when it goes to education and clarify what they would prefer there, um, and that's a decision that the Education Committee can make. Um, so that said, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 89, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Any with reservation? The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next is HB 276 relating to condominiums. I recommend we move on HD1 with a defected date. Members, any discussion? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 276, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next is HB 528 relating to residential leaseholds. I recommend we move on HD1 with a defected date. Members, any discussion? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 528, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Any with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Next item is HB 415 relating to public safety. Um, I will admit, this one was really hard for me. I, I wanted to hear the bill, um, because I wanted to, um, get the feedback from fire departments, and hopefully, I was hoping for some feedback from the, um, from the various counties, um, asking for this repeal and maybe showing how that they would utilize it. Um, obviously, I think all of us support increasing fire safety statewide. Um, I, though, am, um, you know, gonna be deeply concerned and skeptical about moving anything out of this committee that could substantially increase costs on housing, especially, um, you know, right now when the housing crisis is, is so bad. Um, I know, at least on Kauai, um, we've had quotes for $30,000 for sprinkler systems for, for new homes, um, largely because there's, there's really nobody on the island that can do them. Um, and I can't speak for the other islands, but it's a, it's a significant cost. Um, this all measure also sunsets in 2027, um, so, you know, we, in a very short time period, will have this thing sunset anyway on its own. Um, so I will be deferring this bill for today, but I appreciate the testimony on it. HB 1467 relating to housing and resiliency. I recommend that we move on in HD1 with, um, tech amendments, with a defected date, with a, um, add a blank appropriation to the special fund, and we can clarify in the committee report that the intent is to appropriate $10 million into the fund. Um, add language from HB 1056 that allows, uh, will allow DBET to contract with a third party for the program, um, and then use the 140% AMI means test, that's also in HB 1056, and, um, delete the limitation restricting grants and incentives to homes in historically vulnerable areas. Um, uh, I understand if a future committee wants to change that. I, I survived Hurricane Iniki, um, which, in an area that was not historically vulnerable, and half my neighborhood lost their roofs, um, so I think we need to broaden the applicability of this. Um, include the language from HB 1056 that provides clarity on electronic filing of applications and application requirements. Um, adopt the testimony provided by OPSD to, um, broaden the definition of disaster, and then, um, adopt the testimony from the AG, which seemed to be largely tech amendments. Members, uh, and, sorry, lastly, I appreciate all of the work that's gone into this, and the work helping me to kind of combine these two bills. Um, and, and lastly, I should note for the committee report, um, that, you know, I think now the big difference between the two bills is that this one is housed in DBET, the prior bill was housed in DCCA. Um, I think that this is largely probably a question for CPC to determine, um, the best agency to, um, to manage and run this program. Um, so I will leave it to them to, to change that back to C, uh, DCCA if they have a preference. All right, um, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1467, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes? Are there any noes? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next item is HB 741 relating to housing. I recommend that we defect the date and that we adopt amendments proposed in testimony from Habitat for Humanity, but clarify that, that the value shall be less than 1.5 million. And then I want to add a preamble which will outline the intent of the AHRF, the importance of prevailing wages in ensuring that construction workers can afford the homes that they build, and the rationale for a very narrow exemption window for AHRF projects, because I want to, you know, make it very clear in the bill that prevailing wages are important, and that we are opening the door in a very, very small way for this program because of the unique circumstances of the programs and the projects that it is, you know, attempting to fund, like Habitat projects and projects on DHL and et cetera, and that I don't want this used as an argument in the future to open up that door even, even wider. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 741, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes? Any with reservations? The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And then we will be moving on to the three measures which were previously heard on January 31st, and that we deferred for decision-making till today. So there are three bills on that agenda, all of which related to the building codes, and only one of those bills can pass because they are all sort of materially different, and, and some of them do opposite things. So, so we had to make a determination on the best pathway forward here. My recommendation then, or we will be deferring HB 1. I am concerned about the fact that there's no timeframes in there for the councils to act. I think that this could lead to very prolonged periods of non-adoption of building codes, which would have significant insurance ramifications, also ramifications on our ability to get FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grants. As a, as a former council member, I knew the importance of those two-year timeframes in really getting the councils to act in time to update building codes. And, and I also, you know, think that we do need an independent body of industry and county subject matter experts to adopt a code and, and provide that code to the councils. And I think it would lead to radically different codes in different counties if we were to do that. So we will be deferring HB 1. And then for HB 745, I do want to move this forward, so I recommend that we move out in HD1 with a defected date, with technical amendments, and will adopt the amendment, a part of the amendment provided in testimony by the AIA. However, will end their proposed amendment at thereafter, each county may amend the Hawaii State Building Codes as they apply within its own jurisdiction, and leave it at that. I don't think we need the further clarification on how they can amend it. And I really want to be clear here that this is intended to give the counties flexibility to amend building codes to be stricter or less strict, and also want to be clear that that is already enshrined in the law. I did ask the AGs for their opinion, given the discussion that we had last week, about whether the counties can make codes stricter or less strict at their discretion, and the AG responded, quote, "Counties can make whatever amendments to the state building codes that will serve their county best," that it is already clear in state law that they can do that. So this is not changing that practice. So the substantial change here going forward will be that this, if this were to pass, the state building code council version would go into effect statewide upon adoption. If the counties wanted to make changes to that, they would have to do that via an ordinance where they can make it more strict or less strict going forward. I think that that will significantly narrow the window of changes that the counties are doing, because it's not going to be just a sort of a free-for-all over this two-year period where they're trying to adopt the codes and it's an open door. But the intention is, you know, that they have this flexibility going forward. Members, any discussion? Yes, Rep Grandinetti.
I appreciate the opportunity to look at all three bills. It's my first introduction to the issue, and I found some of the testimony about public safety concerns compelling, but I also trust that the bill before us now addresses those concerns. Just, but just out of my own ignorance and knowing how much more I need to learn about the issue, I'm going to vote W.R.
Appreciate your, your thoughts. Members, any further discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 745, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting Rep Grandinetti's reservations, are there any other reservation votes? Any no votes? Seeing none, Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The last item, HB 1321, we will also defer because this is essentially incompatible with HB 745. So seeing no further business and hearing no objections, this committee hearing is now adjourned.